Board of Supervisors meeting. We have a quorum. Please stand and join us for the pledge of our flag and country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. If you have a noise in making machine, would you kindly put it on mute for the balance of the meeting? If you wish to speak to the board, there are forms near the door to fill out, please, and hand them to Mr. Justin Faircloth, who is our acting manager today. Mr. Manager, do we have folks who would like to speak to the board?
You do. You have Ed Tinkle, who would like to speak on the ponds interim report. And you also have Kathleen Flaherty, who would like to speak on lights.
On what, please?
Lights.
Lights.
And then you also have Ms. Flaherty, who would also like to speak on item 3A landscaping committee.
Well, let's start with...
Give him some room.
Yes, let's start with Ms. Flaherty. Would you please come to the podium? Podium, podium.
Which one do you want me to do first? Kathleen Flaherty, 12566 Ivory Stone Pillow.
Hi.
The lights, the lights in the gateway. I was just thinking, because there's no shrubs or anything, the possibility of putting reflection tape on them so people could see them. Reflection tape costs six to $10 a row.
You mean you're up here where the pond trees were?
Where the pond trees were, yeah. Because it's really, even when the lights are on at night, it's really hard because you don't have the trees there anymore. And it might be a safety factor. It could make, save someone's life.
Sounds like a great idea to me. Any objections from any of the board members? Mr. Operations Manager, would you please take care of that?
Yes. On the other hand, if we put up something like that, does it say that we think that that is giving greater protection and if somebody should happen to hit something that they then come back to us saying, "We did this thing that really wasn't any type of certified fix, repair, or remediation," and it only makes us... I'm sorry, I'll finish quickly. It could put us in a position of greater liability than not. If it isn't something that's regularly done, if it isn't something that's Lee County-type certified, DOT, yada, 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 we may be setting a precedent that we think is nice, but it may come back to bite us.
Tony, are we putting ourselves in a worse position by putting tape on these things?
The only question to ask is, if you ask your engineer whether or not it's consistent with the MUTCD, the Green Book, if it's consistent or not inconsistent with that particular manual as a traffic control device. And if Danny has an opinion on that.
Well, I cannot tell you without looking at the manual right now. Danny Nelson, for the record, district engineer. But I will say that since Gateway developed and a lot of the infrastructure and facilities that we have here have been put into place, a lot of changes have been made, even at the county level. So, you know, likely, a lot of the things that you have now would be enhanced even more, so we can certainly take a look at it.
And please remember that this is just a temporary fix. Those lights are going down, as I understand, and this is just to help our residents at night. Thank you.
So, Mr. Governor, it might be appropriate, then, if the board wishes to implement something, is to implement it if the engineer makes a written recommendation that is consistent with the Green Book or the manual on uniform traffic control devices. I think that's what that is.
Do you really think that we need to elevate it to that level for a temporary, for a temporary help to our residents?
Yes, sir.
How many lights have we got? Ten?
Eleven, I think.
There's eleven posts.
When are they coming out?
Go ahead. We're in the process. Please. We're not there yet.
We have a design completed for not just, not just those lights, the Gateway Boulevard, but the plan would be to move those poles over, replace the lights. So, that design is actually done. It's just being reviewed by staff.
I mean, how long are they going to be in to, you know, to try and satisfy Kathleen's point, which is a good point? I mean, are we talking a few weeks?
No, I would say you're probably talking a couple of months or longer because you're going to have to go through the bidding process. And that'll take 30, 45 days. Just the bid alone will take 30-plus days. You have to come back to the board with a recommendation. You'll have to order materials. So, you're talking about the end of the year, so probably three, four months.
Maybe we should get the same people to put the orange tape on there to put the Ridgman's on them, then with the board wouldn't be too... That's us off the record.
We can have them put up, save our life, polls on some of them.
All right. Mr. Turney, you're telling us, in your professional opinion, that we can't even put reflection tape on there without possibly jeopardizing the liability of the board. What you're telling us...
No, all I'm saying, the safest course of action is, when dealing with roadways, is to follow the guidelines that are in the MUTCD.
I understand that, but this is a temporary fix. And are you telling us that we shouldn't do what's being recommended, what's being suggested?
My advice and guidance is that you get the engineer's opinion that it is consistent with MUTCD. Again, if you can get that quickly, maybe have some...
How about if we go to Home Depot and just get those poles with the...
I think the engineer will have an answer and opinion for you before the end of this meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, well, in that case...
And I won't be looking at the MUTCD myself during the course of the meeting, too.
This circular logic does not appeal to me at all. All right. Kathleen, we're going to wait for the engineer on that. How about your second item?
The second item is landscaping committee.
The what, please?
The landscaping committee, okay? The landscaping committee did not have a quorum last month, nor the quorum the month before. They did have a special meeting. However, last month, there were two members, two staff members, and the lawyer was on a hold call because he was going to talk about Florida sunshine law. Thank you. All right. And I, you know, and there was, I don't know the procedure, if the office emails them the day before to remind them, or should they call in? I'm just a little concerned with all the landscaping things that are going on in the community. If there isn't a meeting and there isn't a quorum, are things going to get completed? Now, I did come up with another solution.
I can hardly wait.
Yeah, you know, I am, I am a chair of the Architectural Review Committee at Stony Brook, and we have implemented a substitute, you know, a person who, if there isn't a quorum, could fit in. I mean, that could be a suggestion, that they would have an alternate so that there could be a quorum. My concern is, as we move forward with all the planting that needs to be done and all the roadwork that needs to be done, that there's going to be, you know, problems if there isn't a quorum. And I just figure there's got to be some kind of solution so that there will be.
Oh, I'm sure there is a solution. How, how many members are in your committee and what do you consider...
I have a member of, there's five members in our committee, and at the present time, we have one alternate. We are also looking into another alternate, if possible, so that we, but we usually always have a quorum. I mean, I don't have never, in the past, all the time I've been the chair, have never had a quorum. I mean, but...
You've never had...
Never, never not had a quorum. Sorry, I'll correct.
That's a double negative, I understand.
Okay, but I always want to be prepared. That's my motto, to be prepared, so that if that time arises, we don't have to not have our meeting.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, I'd like to mention something here. We do have, we don't have the chairman of the landscape advisory committee here today, but they only meet, they only meet once a month, the last Tuesday in the month, as you know, for one hour. And that's not a lot. So, and I agree, I think we would expect a quorum, at least four of the five people to be there, as a rule, I would have thought. That would be reasonable. It's not, because they're moving fairly slowly.
Yeah.
And that's, that's partly due to the fact they're only meeting once, one hour per month. Now, I don't want to sort of micromanage what Paul Wingard and his group are doing, but I do think the question should be asked as to, you know, why, why are they not getting a quorum? Or are they struggling to get four or five people here every month? I think that's important, to find that out. And if Paul was here, I would ask him.
Scott Connel, for the record. Diane does communicate with them, and she sets it up, she schedules a meeting, she chases them all down, reminds them of meetings, and gets their email compliance, that they do know about the meeting, whether they're going to show up or not. And it just so happens, they said they were and they didn't, or sometimes they don't respond. We have a meeting next week, and I'm sure I'll get Paul to add it to the agenda, and it'll be discussed.
Yeah, four out of the five of them are working landscapers, so it may be Paul should reconsider the time that they're meeting, things like that. You know, it's like 4:00 PM. It may be better at an evening or a weekend, I don't know. But that's, that's a consideration.
I recommend they explore options.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kathleen. Mr. Manager, do I understand that Mr. Tinkle is the only other person that wants to speak?
That is correct, sir.
Mr. Tinkle, would you please come to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed Tinkle, for the record, 111-80 Ben Pine Drive. As I indicated in an email that I sent to each of the board supervisors, for whatever reason, we didn't get the issue of the interim management report on the ponds on the agenda. So, I'll do it this way, through the public section. Before getting started in this, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the people that worked on this, which was the CDD staff, Ellen Scott, and Severn Trent Moly, and Danny with Tetra Tech, and his people, and our ponds work group. What we've tried to do is to indicate what we believe to be where we are through this background information, and hopefully all of you have had a chance to read this, so I don't have to go through it and read every paragraph. Give the background information on how we got to where we're at, and then go through a listing of the issues that we see as a group collectively. And I think I'm safe to say that everybody that participated in this have endorsed this and are good with it. I've not had anything negative come back challenging any, any section of this. Quite a few corrections and word changes to be more politically correct on some of this stuff, but for the most part, it is accepted by all. The general list of recommendations, in the fact that if you've read it all, I just want to go through those and enumerate those specifically for not only you again, but for the audience. Authorize Tetra Tech with the assistance of the ponds work group, CDD, and ST staff to reprioritize the CDD's bank restoration list on the bank erosion restoration needs, and concurrently develop a second priority list for each pond based on its water quality needs. We have a two-headed monster here, and I think we're beginning, or this last month, we are starting to see some signs of it. And that is, we all know about the erosion, that's been in the spotlight, but the water quality issue is coming up. This month, after the first three months of doing tests, is the first time that we have gone from good to fair to poor on water quality on two of our basins, and they are the Gateway basins. Now, as, I haven't talked to Molly, but I've talked to Elle about it, and I think common sense would lead you to believe the downpours of water that we have had and the runoff we've had have not made that any better. I have no idea what the one sample that I just took Monday is going to, to show, but I do know that the looks of the water weren't any better than they were a month ago, so I have a feeling that with the continued rain, it's not going to get any, any better. But it raises the issue that there are water quality issues that we need to be looking at in addition to just the erosion issues. So, that's why when we're doing the restoration or doing the evaluation of these ponds, look at it from both perspectives. Now, unless you've got some water quality capability in your eyesight, that's a real tough one to go out and look at a pond and determine what its health is without having chemical analysis. We are aided by the fact that we found out in this last couple of weeks, and I certainly wasn't aware of it, but now have access to it, your contract with Aquagenics provided for one time, grab samples once a year for all 69 of the ponds. We've got that data and have been looking at it. And again, it's a snapshot in time, it's done by Aquagenics in November, done in, only time they do it is November. Their thought is, is that the best time to do it would be after the water has stopped breaching the weirs and has gone static, no overflow. I don't necessarily agree with that as a time to do it. I think it needs to be done quarterly, but we'll talk about that later. But the issue is, that does show and give us a track record, maybe a snapshot, one time in 365 days, but for 2013 and 2014, what the water quality was in each of these ponds. They did phosphorus testing, they did nitrates, they did nitrates, they did ammonia. Now, they did not do the tropic index that the county uses as the basis to determine fair, good, and poor, which I would like to see that changed in a contract amendment with them to get that done. But it was surprising what that data did show. It is showing some water quality issues here within the community, definitely showing water quality issues. Whether or not, and what type of alternative, whether it's a total suspended solids, a problem that needs to be addressed by aeration, or whether it's a nutrient problem that needs to be addressed by littorals and/or management techniques, cleaning out storm sewers, letting the residents know, you don't go and take dog waste and throw them in storm sewers as you walk down the street, so then you don't have to go back to the house and put it in your garbage. We need to educate the people to really attack all sides of this, to try to, to reduce this. Meeting with landscapers and making sure they understand when you're clipping the grass, especially when you're clipping the grass along the lakes, mow away from the lake, blow it away from the lake and not blow it into the lake. That just makes the, the whole situation worse. Second, amend the two July board meeting resolutions to one, authorize Tetra Tech to prepare a facilities plan for all 69 ponds within Gateway. And I need to clarify that. We don't have 69 ponds, we have 64, including the flowways. So, I don't know where that 69 ever came from, but Elle and I have gone through, it's fun when you sit there on the map and you count those things and check them off. I mean, that is really fun. Do it four times and you're batty. But we have 64 ponds, and three, four of those will have already been done. So, you could probably reduce 69 to 60 ponds that we need to reevaluate and do a facilities plan for all of those at one time, including not only addressing the erosion issues, but also addressing the water quality issues, including but not limited to aeration facilities, littoral planning, and maintenance. Second, authorize Tetra Tech to amend the CDD's SRF application to include all costs with erosion maintenance and water quality issues, including planning and design costs, bathymetrics and sounding costs, et cetera. One reason for that, and one reason only, stop robbing our reserves in cash. Put this out on a long term, this is a long-term capital improvement, no doubt about it. So, spend the money that a way and do the SRF loan, get that loan, and then Billy Bob that moves into Gateway five years now, he pays for it for 15 years. If we go any other methodology, he gets it for free when he comes in. That's not right. Not right. Three, authorize surveying work is necessary to install water level staff gauge at each and every pond in Gateway, and specifically establish control elevation benchmark at each pond. Four, amend and or renegotiate the Aquagenics contract to add littoral maintenance and quarterly lake water mon, water quality monitoring for all 69 ponds. That goes back to what I was saying earlier, where we do one test, let's do four a year on quarterly basis, and really start to collect some data to find out what we've got in these ponds, where are our problem ponds, which ones are creating the problem that is causing us to not meet water quality standards, such that when we go in to make recommendations for corrections and/or repair and/or replacement, replacement or maintenance, we're going to the right place, and we're not just shotgunning and doing every lake when not every lake may need it. Five, authorize the CDD's current vendor to perform bathymetric surveys and sounding tests for all remaining 63 ponds. Initiate this work only after the above referenced survey work is completed. Perform all this work when the ponds are at or near their control elevation. So, this would be something they probably want to do around the first of November, when the water levels pretty much stop and go static at the weir elevations. The reason we do that is because if you've seen the six bathymetric tests and the corings that you've got, they reference the depths of sludge materials as a percentage of the lake depth. Well, if when they measured the lake, the lake was down four feet, they may show that if you've got two feet of sludge, two feet when it's eight feet deep is a hell of a lot different than when it's two feet and it's 12 foot deep. So, when you're dealing with percentages, you better have a common datum on doing this so that we have accurate information. Continue to work with the ponds group, CDD and ST staff to develop a surface water system maintenance standard for Gateway, including amending the Lee County 10-418 requirement standards to fit Gateway. Concurrently develop a Gateway pond water quality testing procedure that delineates when and how quality, water quality improvements projects are initiated going forward, assuming that water testing shows declining water quality indicator results for our ponds. So, in other words, if we would get, for example, two months of poor readings, we go upstream, do two more tests, trying to isolate where the problem is. Once we get up there and we delineate which pond or ponds is causing the problem, then we divert back to 10-418 as amended, keeping in mind, and the reason I use the term "as amended." Gateway, part of Gateway, the majority of Gateway does not fall under 10-418, falls under the DOs. Only the newer portions of Gateway fall under 10-418. So, we're going to have to fit that to fit Gateway. But the issue is, is we have to go in and do something in any of our ponds because of water deteriorating, water quality. And when we say deteriorating, that means it will admit a minimum of four months of deterioration. Let's make sure that we're drawing a bead on the right target when we do it and spend the money to, to address it. Upon completion of Pond 104 erosion maintenance work, contact Lee County officials, arrange a site visit to the various maintenance projects at the ponds 104, 106, to 108. Defer any further erosion maintenance work until the reprioritization described in number one above is completed and water levels have gone down to a dry season level, and the CDD has received county approval and the methodology being used for erosion maintenance methods. The thought behind that is two. One's money. That avoids us to spend any money. We might want to do the design work, we might want to do the survey work, do that in the next four or five months while we're trying to get that SRF loan, but avoid doing the construction. I don't know if you know what you saw in your board book, but we're up to 400 grand, 400 grand on four dinky ponds. At that level, four million ain't going to touch what we're doing. We're well over $100 a foot. We need to know going forward before we do anything else, the one we obviously have, Lee County's endorsement of it. But more importantly is, let's see how that pond acts during a recession of the water, and it starts dropping down to slower levels. Which one of the methodologies did we use that best fits what we want going forward and results in the least amount of maintenance? Is it the rock? Is it something else? Is it the geotube? Is it the geo web? Is it the armamax? Which one works best? I think that's why we put these things in, as a test. Let's don't go spend any more money to do any more erosion construction projects till we have the answers to the results of that testing period. And then the big one is, that buys us time to get that SRF loan, hopefully, in a position to where we can start spending that money and deferring this out over a 20-year amortization as opposed to spending any more of our reserve monies. But when I saw that $400,000, it scared the daylights out of me. That's, that's a lot of money. Now, some of it may be repetitive because it was a learning process. Then when we get out and rebid this on these other projects where they're engineering lead done correctly, instead of going to contractors and having them basically engineer it using manufacturers' recommendations, we found out that wasn't the way to do these. We need to have Tetra Tech get in there, do the slopes, do the, do everything right, put it in a bid schedule with specifications, and really nail this down. And not the least of which is time, time restraints. We can't have these guys come in here and camp, camp out. My, my community happened to be the, the brunt of the first projects, and this morning in our board meeting, we, we heard about it. People are very frustrated with seven months of all this debris and stuff in their backyard. The fact that they know that this has been a experimental project, and the first one going, you know, they're buying that. But I don't think it's going to get sold further down the road. We need to have our act together, get these guys in there, and the time to be doing is when the water levels are down. We've talked about that 100 times. You don't do this stuff when you get a 1.5-inch rain every other day. The guys are fighting the water with pumps, and we can't go in there and block off these days. If we get a four-inch rain and you have a sewer plug in there, and Billy Bob forgets that where the plug's at to unseal it, that water's going to be in the streets before we know it. Anyway, eight, authorize Tetra Tech proceed with pond surveys, cross-sections, and design for the next set of high priority projects or ponds after the prioritization has been completed and approved by all parties. I think that's just common sense. Once we get that reprioritization, Danny and his firm can use that to do the facilities plan, really get these things down to the gats behind as to what needs to be done, what percentage of the ponds need erosion, what percentage of the ponds need water quality, what percentage of the ponds need both, and really address what the dollar value of this whole thing is going forward. And then the ninth one, and I've, I've been on the stand on this one for a long time, it's high time we have got to investigate the pros and cons of the CDD creating a stormwater management utility to administer and control all future pond wetland stormwater system-related issues. We have a sewer system and a rate schedule accordingly. We have a water system, and we have a rate schedule accordingly. We have an irrigation system and a rate schedule accordingly. We should have one for stormwater. The people that create the water runoff on stormwater are the ones that should be paying the higher costs associated with the implementation of our wetland and pond and stormwater system management. That's basically the report. I don't know, Danny may have some other items that he might, might want to add or expand on, but, but I'd really like to see is, after he gets done, is discussion of motions by the board of supervisors to amend that resolution in March from the 100% to 25% on the littorals, and then redirect the two July motions of authorizing Danny and Tetra Tech to do a facilities plan on all 64 remaining lakes, along with revising the SRF application based upon the results of that. I think everybody needs to understand that that SRF system, you go, and I don't care if you borrow 20 million, 10 million, or $200,000, that money is on a reimbursement program. You're going to go out and have a facility plan created that they approve and they accept after you've approved it and gone through public hearings. Plans and specs have to be prepared, which typically they will approve, and then you go to bids, which they will approve, you order a contract, and then you pay the money, and then you get reimbursement from them. So, the only way, if you go and get those monies, whether it be $5 million or $20 million, is you call the shot as to how it's obligated. You call the shots. So, if you want to take and make a, a five-year program, a one-year program, you can do that if you can find enough contractors to do it that quickly. If you want it to be a five-year program, then you do it that a way. The only limitation, I think, that you need to check with, and Danny probably knows a lot more than I know about it, is to find out what the limitations are on the period that if you get, let's say, $10 million, what is the time you have to initiate construction on the project for that, that money? If they come back and tells you it's five years, then what you might want to do is to go back and when you get your priority and get your facilities plan, amend that application to the dollar value that you can theoretically get done in five years. If it's 10 years, stretch it to 10. I would hope that you could get it out as far as you can, simply to avoid the non-construction cost associated with doing multiple SRF applications. I've done a ton of SRF applications, and every time you put in for one, you're going to get engineering fees, every time you put in one, you're going to get legal fees, and every time you put in one, you're going to get bond council fees and rate consultant fees. Why do those every time? Go for it all one time and get it done, and get it done, and avoid that non-construction. Typically, on these kind of projects, your non-construction costs can run as high as 12%, 15% of your total. So, if you're going to get a bond for 4 million for construction, you're going to better, better be going to get 4.5, 4.6 million to pay for those non-construction costs, unless you want to finance those, again, with cash, which raises a question, why would you want to do that? Yeah. Thank you very much for your time.
Ed, just stand there for a second. I have a strong suspicion that there are going to be some questions from the board on this report. And I, I don't say that in, in any other way, except I want to thank you for this to start off with. I think it's an excellent job, and we needed it. But it does raise a bunch of questions, and I suspect... Pam, would you like to start on questions?
Well, Ed, can you clarify for me why you feel that we should go to the 25% littorals opposed to the 100%?
Yeah, I, this goes back, if we can wind the clock back to about March the 9th. A presentation was made on page one, was made on page 100 of the board book at that time, that I believe Severn Trent prepared. And what it was, was an analysis of the, your lakes, and I think they had the square footage or the acreage of the lakes, they had the lineal footage, linear footage of the lakes, they had an estimated price per foot at 25% of the lakes, assuming littorals at 25%, and then they had a column, which was the total cost. I don't recall, I slept since then, had a drink or two since then. I do not... cost. I don't recall, slept since then, had a drink or two since then. I do not remember what the conversation was that got us from a recommended 25% lateral to a motion of 100%. I have been researching this. I've talked to Lee County until I'm blue in the face. And Lee County will tell you, they'll come in and tell you. The reason they selected 25% as the number is there is nothing to show any return on going above 25% other than you're spending a lot of money. So if you go and put in 100% laterals, there is nothing, nothing to show that you're getting four times the benefit. In fact, there's nothing to show that you're getting anything when you go above 25 and that's why they went with that number. So my thing is, is let's stick with what the county said. We've already indicated that 10-4-18 is applicable to us for everything since, what, Tony, 2008, something like that, when that was developed. So why would we want to take and adopt something that one, does not appear to be cost effective, but more, more importantly, it goes way beyond the standard and doesn't appear to be able to produce any, uh, any substantial gains?
Thank you.
Margaret, do you have any questions that you want to go ahead with?
I do. I know that, um, I like the idea of the, the loan, obviously, for the reasons that you submitted. And you're saying to slow down and make sure that we know which type of work we're going to do going forward. But my concern is, once again, if we bring this to a screeching halt and we don't do any work this dry season, we've, once again, another year goes by with nothing done.
I totally agree. And if you heard me, I said, get the engineering work done in this four-month wait period such that the first of the year, we hit the deck with bids, we got the plans done, we've got this cross-sections done, we've got the soundings done, we've got the bath metrics done, we can immediately then, and hopefully have an SRF loan around the corner, that we can go in ahead then and proceed to whatever you all declare as, do you want to do the next two lakes, the next five lakes, the next seven lakes, whatever? But do it on somebody else's nickel. Do it on the SRF. And the other thing is, is that you're going to have to go out and get, as I understand, and I just learned this and Danny will have to correct me if I'm wrong, you're going to have to go out and get a line of credit no matter what you do on this. Because you pay the contractor and you get reimbursement back from the state on the SRF loan. So you're going to have to go out and get a line of credit to do this anyway. So your best thing is, is go in ahead and during this same period, while Danny is doing the engineering, get Tony and the people that he works with on getting the bond work going that would, would be the, what do you call it, the?
Preliminary work.
Yeah, that's the word I'm looking for. The, the cash flow, the money that would be able to allow you to pay the contractor on a monthly basis. And then get the 30-day, 60-day later, get your SRF money back.
And Mr. Chairman, on that note, if, if the board wants to go ahead and program some of this based upon the experience in Lee County, I mean, excuse me, in Cairo County, one of my CDDs, we just wanted to get a line of credit for half a million dollars for emergency purposes. We have been working on it since March with Iberia Bank. Uh, because they don't quite, not everybody understands CDDs now. Iberia Bank and Lee County does because they did the water, I believe. But I think if, if you wish to go that route, I think it's some direction you may want to give to the manager to start that inquiry process with local banks now.
I'll tell you how I had a lot of experience. Same thing up north. And I'll tell you what, to really take the pressure off the banks. You simply go and to develop and have Severn Trent and/or assistance from a financial advisor, like what's our, what's our guy's name?
Well, Bill Reagan helped and also the other.
And you just pass, you pass a resolution to have the rate increase to cover that PNI. The bank doesn't have a problem then at all because their money's covered. It's dedicated money for them. You're going to have to do it anyway to pay for the principal interest on the loan. But go in ahead and pass a resolution to do that.
I know as a part of this, at the last meeting, Danny talked about, you know, pre-authorizing vendors.
That would save time.
So I think.
Pre-qualifying.
Pre-qualifying, right.
Great idea. That could easily be done in the same period of time. I totally agree with you. While that water level is down, which is, means probably around the end of November, uh, end of December, we're going to be getting down to levels that you can go back and start working on this. We need to be in a position not to be going and do design, not to go be doing surveys. That, that's got to be behind us. And keep in mind, the end of November, the end of December are around the corner.
Right, exactly.
But don't, we can't do what we did the last time. We can't go and have vendors doing the design based upon their interpretation of what the manufacturer's recommendations are. We found out already on three ponds, they don't know what they're doing. They need a set of specifications to bid on. They need to do it the right way. And we need to be protected. And one of the things that we talked about, and I don't know how many times in meetings, is we got to put in these contracts a time to do this work. You haven't got the rest of life to do it. You've got to get into these communities and this is going to get tougher. The, the four that we did, the three that we did, we had pretty good access and it worked out because we found some vacant lots for staging and things like that. As we get into some of these other areas within Gateway, you're not going to have anything. Good example that I take off, right off the bat, was driving up there with L last week, was Magnolia Lakes. There's only one place you're going to stage. It's out in the street. And I mentioned that in my community and I thought I was going to have my head taken off. So it's, there's got to be a lot of planning to go in how we're going to do this. You guys have got it made in that you've got an LME. Your only problem is you can't get to the LME without a helicopter. And if you don't have any easements to go from the road back, you really got a problem. And explaining to the residents why you selected their yard to tell the daylights out of it, to have all these trucks and gravel and you can't talk long enough. So we got some logistics issues that we're going to have to work out. But everything that, when you start talking logistics to a contractor, dollars. Just going to add to the cost. So we need to work all that out. But the three or four that we have done and we are doing were pretty simple. We haven't really bitten into the hard ones yet.
Okay. Rod, do you have questions?
I'll go first.
Carrie, you're next.
No, I want to hear Rod's pitch.
All right.
Sounds like last night.
It does, exactly. I was going to say that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Ed, for your report and for your group's work. Um, I want to specifically address the eight, nine points that you've recommended, one at a time, if that's okay. That might be a logical way to go about it. Uh, first one was to ask the Tetra Tech to reprioritize the 64 ponds that we have. Now, um, I'm going to ask Danny as well about this because, Danny, you remember that when, when we first discussed this loan, it was based upon 49 ponds prioritized by Morris Riley in 2013, 14?
Correct.
Okay. And, and the top few were critical and the rest were not critical. And I figured out a kind of a 4 million number, you, we did this together, and then it got to five.
Right.
Uh, we know the story there. Um, do you think that reprioritizing would be a good idea?
Yes. However, we have, I don't want to lose this season. Um, I know that the, the five that we have currently are ones that need to be done. Maybe one of those, because I know there's another pond that L and Ed feel strongly about that should be included.
118.
118. And we can either replace or we can add that to the list. So I'm, I'm just fearful that, I don't want to rush the prioritization and I don't want to lose this, this season either. So I think with this, this current year, I think we move forward and we move forward simultaneously with the prioritization, reprioritization.
And related to that question, most of our number one, prioritization was originally based on pond bank erosion prioritization. What Ed's talking about is two parallel prioritizations. One's pond bank, another one is water quality.
Ed, keep in mind, the reason I do that is that's totally on the basis of proceeding with an SRF loan that allows you to spend the money to vote. If you all make the call that you are simply going to address pond erosion first, then skip that.
That's, I'm coming to that. That's, that's exactly where I'm going.
But, but that, that kind of takes and puts us behind the eight ball on the water quality issues with, based upon some of the sampling data that we're getting. That would suggest we need to be doing stuff on water quality.
And a lot of this ties in together because the authorization we currently have for the facilities plan just addresses the erosion. So if we're going to start bringing that other into it, um, then if the board remembers prior to the current authorization, we had submitted a more detailed, thorough, more expensive option that kind of gets to where Ed's talking about, which hence in return was where we were with that $15 million request for inclusion. And the board said, no, they didn't want to go down that way, revise the request for inclusion and revise the scope for the facilities plan. So that's where we are today. So if you want to move forward that way, then some of the stuff that has on here, it wouldn't be applicable.
Okay. Well, that is, brings us to point, the second point, which is the addressing the SRF loan application. And back to July the 9th board meeting, Mr. Chairman, we, we all agreed as a board that we were going to go for 5 million strictly for pond bank erosion. Okay. That's where we stood. We didn't have the appetite to go to 10 or 15. I remember that meeting.
Right.
Um, and I, I feel, right?
That's correct. That's my recollection.
Um, so the question now, and I, is, in my mind, this SRF, it's just my opinion anyway, that this SRF loan is really for capital-based improvements. And I regard pond bank erosion and possibly bathometric and, and aeration might be thrown into that rather than throwing the whole kitchen sink into it, which includes plantings and, and which is perhaps leaning more towards maintenance. But, so the question I want to ask is, do you think that we can put bathometric, which is 32, about $30,000 for the remaining lakes? We've done six and we haven't yet seen the results of those bathometric tests. And I'd like to see those results before we approve doing the next 54.
Let me comment on, on two things. Um, one is on, um, the bathometric and the work that has, was done. And I think I said at the last board meeting, we wanted to have a presentation at this board meeting. We weren't able to get Jeff to this meeting. Uh, he was, he was not available. So what I asked is if we can have him at the first meeting in October. And he's, we had a conversation yesterday, so he's prepared. He'll, he's got it on his agenda already.
Right.
So, um, that would be October 1st, I believe, is the first, his first Thursday.
So, so great if we can see the results of those six. That was the reason we didn't go beyond six. We wanted to see if the results were going to be useful.
Yes.
If you've got the six, you just haven't had them presented to.
I, we haven't seen it presented and we haven't seen the, what we're going to do with the results before we approve the next 54.
Okay. I was confused there because we've all seen the reports, I hope. I've seen them.
The reports of the bathometrics?
Yeah, for those six ponds.
I don't know if the board is.
No.
Just to the ponds group?
That's correct.
As a preliminary review.
But, but even if we had seen them, the point I'm trying to make is, what are we going to do with the results?
Explanation.
No, what are we going to do with them? Uh, is it going to lead towards narration decision? That's, that's the kind of impression I'm getting.
Well, yes. And, and there are things that when you, you need to see the report and you need to see the presentation so that you understand it. And there, there are questions that, that we had, and I wouldn't say concerns, because Jeff did, um, it's, it's, it's great the work that he did. Um, there's one thing with it when you see it, and Jeff will explain it, is the period when he did this work was, um, largely during, coring was done more in the rainy season, but the bathometric was really done prior to the rainy season. So what you will actually see is a little conflicting. So getting back to one of the points Ed made earlier is actually doing the work when we're at control or closer to control gives you a better, um, a better understanding of bathometric. I'm going to leave it at that because you haven't seen the report.
Right.
But I do want to go back to the other, other comment about SRF and can we actually use the funding, uh, use SRF funding. Um, I actually did talk to the SRF folks yesterday just to make sure they had the request for inclusion. And, um, so we, we talked for a bit. It's a gentleman I've known for 20 years. And, uh, I, you know, I asked him how the process would work in terms of, of the loan. Um, they've just changed, and I think I've told that to this board before. This year, they changed the way the process worked. In the past, you went to them one time for a loan and that was basically on the construction side. Now they do allow you to go for both planning and for engineering. Um, this is totally a, a new process to them. So if that's something you would desire to do, you certainly could, um, do that. And we'd have to find out the actual process, but you could get, you could include those soft costs in the loan. So that would also include bathometric because it would be used as part of design. So your design costs and your planning costs, um, can go. So what they would do is you would have a loan for your planning phase. You would have a loan for your design and you'd have a loan for construction. Um, the other thing that they pointed out.
Time out.
Yes, sir.
Can any of the costs that you just enumerated be reimbursed under the loan if they were incurred prior to the date of the loan?
No. And, and, and as it sits right now, what I've actually told SRF is that I didn't believe that, that you would include those soft costs in the, in the loan because I didn't think, I didn't want to hold anything up at this point. In the future, you, you certainly can because we're going to go through this multi-year program. But at least the initial, um, efforts, I didn't, I don't think you'll be at a point where they can approve it. Because they, you've got to go through their, their process. You've got to first do the facilities, um, plan. And nothing can take place to allow you to be approved for the loan until you get through this, the train far enough down the track. So moving forward, you, you certainly can. But, um, I mean, that's up to the board on how you want to proceed. I just don't know logistically if you can, if you're ready to do that at this point.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Continue.
Please, go ahead.
Thanks, Danny. So, uh, question, when, if we, when do you think the loan would be approved?
So the, uh, the first thing we've got to do is complete the facilities plan. Now the facilities plan, we've somewhat been on a holding pattern because the, the, what SRF does want, what I was hoping, is they would allow us to have a facilities plan that was generic enough that we could go each year. And if that prioritization changed, we would have that flexibility. They said, no, what, the way we're approaching it, um, I've described how we're approaching it to him. Each year, we're going to do a certain number. So he said, what we've actually got to have is we have to define each project.
Okay. Detailed facilities plan in priority.
So that means if we change it, we've got to go and do an amendment to the facility.
So when will we get the money?
So the process is, um, short answer or you want the defined answer?
Sorry?
You want the short answer or the defined answer?
I need a date.
Of?
Or the month.
Or a quarter? Q1 of calendar year 2016.
Okay. So.
What, I'm sorry, what was it?
Quarter one of, of 2016.
Which means you're going to have to upfront some, some cost if you proceed.
Q2 of fiscal year 2016.
So I'm trying to conclude point number two, Ed, before, I don't want to, this to take all the meeting up, but it's, you've made some great suggestions. So point number two, um, my thought would be that we, if we threw bathometrics in there, which is 500 bucks a lake times 60, that's 330,000 bucks. You know, that's reasonable to throw that into the SRF in my opinion. But what I'd like to know is, and you probably can't tell me, is what that leads to in terms of, probably aeration projects, because we're going to have to put hydro down to lakes, which is expensive, right? That's the big part.
The electric will be the.
I meant hydro, electric, whatever you call it.
Right, right.
Um, so can you just ballpark? Um, how much that, will that inflate that 5 million bucks if we throw aeration into that?
I, I think, I'm not going to say double. I mean, we don't, we don't have a clue because we don't know how many lakes, what lakes we're going to have to put in. But you're talking, you're talking in the millions.
Assuming a third of them then. I mean, have you a feel for that, Ed?
No. That's where I was kind of hoping to get some information from the people over at Pelican.
Pelican?
No. When you and I went to, I never could think of the name of that place.
Heritage.
Heritage Palm.
Yes.
Find out what they, you know, they've aerated. Find out what they paid and try to figure out and convert it to a, uh, either a square foot acreage basis or a linear foot basis. So we have some ideas to go. I have no idea. But I can tell you the electric portion of it is going to be expensive.
Aeration is going on at Pelican.
Correct.
Who, who's doing that?
Geller and, I mean, company.
I mean, who's installing?
I, I don't, I don't know.
We might, might get with Pelican and find out what their costs are per acre.
We can, we can estimate it based on, based on that, on the.
Well, I, I, I would like to support the idea of including aeration and, and, um, bathometrics into this SRF loan, but it's hard for me to do that if I have no idea what that's going to do to the 5 million number.
Well, and, and that's when we, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, you want to help us out here, Molly?
Molly Meadows, Severn Trent for the records. You mentioned 30 some thousand dollars for the bathometrics.
I'm guessing, guessing 500.
It's really around $70,000 to get what you need. And that was from Jeff Key. When he goes back and repriced the amounts, he sent me an email and said that we include this, you need corings, some soil information, plus the actual bathometric part. So he said it's around 70 grand.
I always thought it's 500 dollars based on Pelican preserve.
Right, but he, he went back.
I think it, it, for the bathometrics.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you, Molly.
The soundings component.
For the bathymetrics, and what Jeff will explain at the next meeting is you need to do the bathymetrics first. So then he would know where best to recommend to do the, the corings. So, and together, those two would be in that.
Well, so directionally, I personally feel that we, we should look, take a look at aeration, because it is a capital investment that could be spread over twenty years. I don't particularly support the idea of putting plantings and things into the loan, Ed, but I, I do think, and we can't make a motion today unless we have some more facts, right, on the aeration thing?
Right, and when we, when I prepared the initial request for inclusion, it was, you know, we're, the current request for inclusion down to the five million are just the prioritized lakes. So that fifteen million was a best guesstimate of aeration, again, it was, it was a guess only, and including all of the lakes. So we're not at that point, and, and I'm not suggesting you, you go to that point, but you can certainly, I think with the, if we use an assumption, a third of the lakes, forty percent of the lakes. And we use the information from the, the aeration going on in Pelican, I mean, we can come to a number, is that twenty, is it, you know, two million dollars, is it a hundred, you know, is it one point five?
That's what I'm asking, that's an order of magnitude.
That's another thing, is we, the listing we have has forty nine ponds, and we know there are sixty four ponds. It might come out, but you might have fifteen ponds that don't even have an issue.
Right.
Take, for example, go down there behind the charter school, Scott and I have talked about this also, that pond's back there, nobody sees that thing. So going in there and doing erosion control when it's up against a wetland and all the way around, that would to me be one of the lowest priority things we'd have. And that's a big lake, so that would be one that you might be able to dump out. And what I guess I'm saying is, instead of going to sixty four, you might be after reprioritization, work yourself back to where you heard forty nine to begin with. But at least you know they are the correct forty nine. Right now, I don't trust that list.
Danny, can we, would it make sense to put bathymetrics and aqua, and, and aeration into another SRF, or would it make more sense to throw it into one?
Into the same one, yeah, yeah, I wouldn't go after a separate SRF, I would put it all into one package.
Thank you. Point number three, Ed, you're talking about a water level staff gauge, makes sense to me, I don't, I presume at the same time, we talked last meeting, Danny, about checking property lines before we restore pond banks, so that if people have lost property, they get it back.
Yes, and we actually have asked a local surveyor for pricing of what that would generally, you know, cost. It's actually fairly inexpensive, I think, what I say, two hundred something dollars a lot or not.
Two seventy five.
The other thing to, to the point of the staff gauges, so yes, I agree with the property lines as well. One thing Molly and I were talking about, I don't know that we necessarily have to go into every pond. We may be able to go into a group of ponds if the elevation is consistent and they're all interconnected, that might save us some.
Closely interconnected.
Closely interconnected, yeah. So that would, that would save us, for instance, one oh six, one oh seven, and one oh eight.
That would have been one.
Okay.
That could be a single.
The only thing about that is, is as we know, ten four eighteen is pretty well established, that that hard surface definition starts at the control elevation. And when they come out there, I'd like to make sure that we know what the control elevation is, and there's not any hard surface above that point, so that they get all.
Point number four, Ed, you're talking about the aquagenics contract, I, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, we defer that to item six on the agenda, which we're discussing the aquagenics contract at that time.
Okay.
Okay, so, point number five, we've talked about bathymetrics just now, and I don't think, I, I don't think we should proceed today with more bathymetrics until we see the results of the first six.
I apologize, I thought you guys had seen that stuff.
Point number six, you're making out of the nine points. Continue to work, I, I think this is a really important point, is the pond standards document that's been, Molly and Al, and the Pelican Ponds Group has been working on this, and now your group's working on it. And in the end, in the end, this standards document has got to represent all of Gateway and Pelican Preserve. It's a standard that Bob Geppert and his group, and Severn Trent and your group have all got to come together, and we've all got to agree this standard. And, and we need to do that before we can tell a contractor what, what service levels or performance levels. Ivan, you and I and Scott were talking about service levels at our meeting this morning. You know, with the pond standards document is really important, and I think, I think that, I think that the sooner we can get your group and the Pelican Ponds Group together and finally agree that, the better.
Being facetious is that it would have been nice to have done that three years ago, when we wrote the original aquagenics contract, instead of pulling generic bull out and not.
I totally agree.
You've got a contract that is basically meaningless.
We're going to come to that on item six on the agenda. Your point number seven, inviting league county officials, we talked about that last meeting, Danny. You have Ben Dixon and Tom Sawtell, you have one who's lived on one oh four, six, seven, and eight, great idea. Let's get them to, let's get them on side, is that still the plan, Danny? You okay?
Choking.
What, what, what did we say?
It's the thought of bringing league.
It was concurrent.
Is that the intention, okay? And I agree with what Margaret and Ed are talking about here. I think that we need to take stock of what we've done and let the water levels go down and see how one oh four, six, seven, and eight behave before we proceed forward with another one in the new season. And that might tie in with the timing of the SRF loan anyway. And, and yeah, I agree with you, let's do all the prep work and vetting of contractors before the end of this year.
But you've got to do that anyway.
Point number nine, pros and cons of creating a stormwater, are you talking about in-house? Are you talking about in-house pond maintenance?
No, a gateway stormwater utility. It's just basically like your water utility, your wastewater utility, and your irrigation utility.
Right, explain what you mean, please.
Okay, the community's, this common up north, we've been doing it for twenty five, thirty years. Coming in and creating an actual, there's all kinds of research information about there, how to do it. Come in and essentially, everything that's in your general fund now, your lakes, your wetlands, and your storm sewers are all right now buried in your general fund. Pull those assets out, those cost expenses out, put them in a separate category that is financed, the revenue from which is created by that utility. Basically a rate schedule, just like you have on storm. The only difference is, it's done on impervious acres.
On what?
Impervious acres. So if you take ten houses in Gateway, twenty houses in Gateway, and come up with the number of square feet of impervious surface per house, of an average, let's say it's two thousand. That sets the unit at one, one equivalent stormwater utility resident. Then you go to all the commercials, multi-families, add up all their acreage and simply divide by two thousand, and they pay ten times, twenty times, thirty times, fifty times, or a half. Depending upon what their impervious is. The theory is, is that the guy that's creating the water, creating the runoff, creating the problem pays more.
Don't you think that's a long-term issue?
This is so simple here, it's unbelievable. We've done it for cities as big as Indianapolis, that's long-term. Because you have so much work to do. Here, you've got two hundred commercials to calculate, and that's it.
Justin, have you any experience in other CDDs with it being done this way?
I do not personally, I don't know if Stephen knows.
Could you, could you ask Cal, ask the question?
Tony may be able to answer this pretty easily.
After reading the report, Tony Pierce for the record, I just was doing some quick reading and Googling, and FASD has a, every couple of years they do a report that's for the Association of Special Districts, and they have a survey of the entities that have stormwater utilities in the state of Florida. The list I saw were all cities and counties. There's a specific statute in Florida that gives cities and counties the ability to impose a stormwater utility fee. There's no specific statute that I'm aware of that provides for a community development district to impose a stormwater utility fee. Arguably, there's a, there's language in chapter one ninety that talks about the district in charge, you know, rates, fees, and charges for use of district facilities, like recreational fees. I don't know if that's sufficient authority for the district to impose a stormwater utility fee. That would be carving, plowing, creating new ground, however you want to call it, from my knowledge. And again, we can do a quick analysis by contact in other CDDs, but based upon what I saw so far, I'm not, I did not see any CDDs that have utility, stormwater utility. And it's, and they're going to be used for operation and maintenance, not for capital infrastructure, typically in Florida.
That's basically your big thing anyway.
We can research that.
And thank you for giving me the time. Ed, on point number nine, I'd be in favor of doing a bit more research before.
Oh, there's a lot of research that's going to be done.
Thank you.
Lot.
Thank you.
Okay. What is the chain of command? Of who is actually managing? What we're looking at now as the authorization or the realization and the purpose of going out and borrowing five million bucks? My observation is that in this last thirty five minutes we've been discussing it, I think the phrase, I don't know, or something like, I don't know, repeated itself in excess of twenty three times. So it seems to me that for us to be asked to be making motions at this time with twenty three or more I don't knows, and with numerous people, that there doesn't seem to be anyone that we can personally look at that is either one of our contractor professionals or one of our staff people and say, you personally are leading this or commanding this ship, and we expect you to be the one that holds themselves accountable for all this. Without that, we keep going in multiple direction, and we're like a ship that's just going and tacking back and forth. And I don't think that there's anybody that, at the way that this is organized now. If this was a business, and we are a business, and you just promoted the idea of having an additional business. I don't think it's a good management model, and I don't think that we're at a point now without establishing that, that we should be considering borrowing five million dollars or what could expand to be more. Next question, constantly these SRFs and et cetera, which is great for the people that know it, but doesn't help the people we serve very much. What does it stand for?
SRF?
Yeah.
State revolving fund.
Say it one more time.
State revolving fund.
Okay, what's the interest rate?
It depends upon your community and what census tractor in and all that. That's to be determined once you get in and file the application.
Give me the bottom, give me the top.
When I talked to him, they said we'd be somewhere above two percent.
Somewhere above two percent?
Generally two to three percent.
There's a forum on the website. Give me a top and give me a bottom, please.
I don't think anybody could do that, because there's so many variables.
Okay, so we don't know that either.
Well, we know one thing, we know one thing, it's better than the bank.
We know some numbers. Again, we're talking five million bucks here, okay? How long, if we reestablish the priority list of these lakes, since it apparently has changed, once at least, if we redo it again, how long can we be assured that it won't change again?
Do we answer that?
Sure.
Well, the issue is right now, the one that you've got, the list you've got, in my opinion, was not prepared professionally.
I hear a lot of criticisms, but I think Morris would fight that.
Gary, I think within two to three weeks, if the combination of the ponds group, Severn Trent staff, Tetra Tech, and CDD staff, we can be out and we can survey all of the lakes and have that reprioritization done so fast.
Going to be the party?
The lead.
Who is the one that we look to?
It's got to be CDD staff, it's that simple. They're running the show.
Who would that be?
To me, the obvious is the operations manager. Now, if he delegates it to Elle, the issue you've got, and I thought that's where you were going a while ago, is that she's got to have more time. You guys got to wake up and smell the roses relative to this whole deal of ponds and wetlands. Elle cannot do this work, working twenty hours a week, there is no way it can't be done.
So you're going in the direction that I'm trying to steer this ship here. We have got all these different financial things that are going on, and we really haven't established our prioritization and the fact that we have got to create a management model that's a real management model, but isn't constantly going back and forth like a ping pong ball or a cue ball. And other people, other people, that though they may be quote unquote involved, it still doesn't have us with one direct focus for a very critical and expensive situation. It's just, again, mass organization disorganization. It's just not there.
It doesn't need to be.
Why do you think I'm bringing this up?
I'm sorry.
I thought you were answering Gary's question or making a statement, would you please say that again?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be that difficult. First of all, every project I've ever worked on when you're doing the SRF, the engineer's the one who guides that program, project through. The planning phase, the design phase, and the construction phase. So you've retained him already to do seventeen lakes. I don't see anything different that we're changing in taking that to sixty four lakes, notwithstanding the issue that we're doping water quality out of it. And we're only looking at erosion and aeration and bathymetrics. Nothing's changed except the extent. And the reason the extent's changed is simply to take and get the SRF money necessary to correct these as we go through. The prioritization is something that has got to be put together, that table, that spreadsheet that you guys had that had the forty nine. The only difference between it and the one we're going to talk about is it's going to have sixty four. And you guys will either endorse that or you don't endorse it. But somebody makes the decision that it goes ahead. I'm assuming that with the combination of the pond works group, Molly, Elle, and Tetra Tech, we can put that document together pretty fast. It's, it's nothing, it's nothing really hard to do. You simply go out there, you get the Gator Mobile, and you drive around these lakes and make a determination, this one's worse than this one versus this one. Will we all agree on that? It's going to have to be a negotiation, but the big thing is, you develop that list. Then he can go on ahead and do the work you're talking about. I don't see any other way of doing this, other than the catch as catch can way, we've done it for the past year, which has led to the expenditure of four hundred thousand dollars on four dinky little lakes. We can't go that same route anymore of guessing what we're going to do. We need to turn it over to the professionals and do this correctly.
But you see, we hired an engineer some years ago, and then we rehired an engineer.
I don't know who you're talking about.
He's standing beside you.
Oh, I thought you meant Morris rather.
And call me crazy, but I kind of figured that that person is the person that if this is what you just said, and what I would believe is true, is a major engineering type situation, that he would have, should have, could have, and must have been the one in charge and leading the ship, the one that would be.
He was given the list of priorities as developed by your other consultant, that was done, that was done previously, that wasn't under their deal.
We're kicking the can down the road.
That's what I'm trying to stop.
If a person is going to be in charge, that person has got not only the responsibility to manage the project, but if the person finds that they've been given a can of worms, then it's their responsibility to also come back to us or wherever that level falls within the company, and inform us. We keep getting, and you alluded to, this six thing report, you thought we had it, Danny then jumped in and said, oh, no, 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 they didn't get it. So once again, the communication factor between us and this, once again, isn't happening. So again, there needs to be, and you immediately jump back in with, again, we'll take Molly, we'll take you, we'll take Danny, we'll take. We need, in my opinion, to establish the pecking order of who is responsible, what their specific duties are going to be. We're talking about a million, five million dollar minimum project here. And something that we're going to be accountable for to the. that we're gonna be accountable for to the people that we serve. We need to establish that chain of command. We need to establish what each person's specific duties are, or the person at the top has to do that. And they need to communicate that to us in good communication, and not just kind of nice notes, but notes. Additionally, in here, we talked about, the numbers keep changing, and again...
Which number?
Everything from the number of lakes, Ed, that were in here, which is, it's great. The work, that's commendable. I would've expected somebody to by now have an accurate count on the number of lakes.
That's why I did it.
Call me crazy.
That's why I did it.
Okay.
I was frustrated with this. The numbers didn't add. But the thing is, I totally agree with you, Gary, going back, and I'll reiterate it. The guy that to me that's got to do that has got to be Scott. And then Scott can't do all that with all the other stuff he's got going on. So the next person in line is your representative who's in charge of basically lakes and wetlands. That's Elle. But you can't do it for twenty hours. Not gonna work. Bump her up, but I don't know that you wanna put her in the position to authorize expenditures of funds. That's why I go back and say that to me Scott would be the guy that would call the shots with the assistance of her staff, which would be Elle, or his staff, which would be Elle and Molly.
Well, that's a management model. So again, we need that.
But you can do that concurrently with doing this.
We keep alluding, we keep diverting. We aren't getting it done.
Gary, good, good example. Just a good example on this. Go in the soapbox here for a second. We sit here and you get a management report on how many coats of paint need to be on a basketball goal. That, to me, is the dumbest thing I have ever heard in my Florida years. You need to have been getting what I just found out we got, and that is water quality tests of our lakes that we've been for doing for two years under contract of any one of your... Did you even know about it? Let alone have you seen it? That's ridiculous.
Okay, hold on.
That's, that's the important stuff, and I totally agree with what you're saying. But I think that your management tool or your management scheme on how to do this can be running concurrently. The work that's gotta be done predominantly sits right here. They're the ones that have to crunch the documents.
I think the management model can be done by the chairman and one other party tomorrow.
That's, that's, oh sure. That's pretty, that's pretty accurate. And I agree almost wholeheartedly with what you say. Almost wholeheartedly.
That's all right.
I'd say wholeheartedly, but I don't remember everything you said. But anyway, okay, here's what we're gonna do if the board doesn't shoot me down. Scott and I, and Danny, and Ed, and Molly, and Elle, we're gonna get together next week. Scott, next week. And we're gonna, and we're gonna, and we are going to make what I call a PERC chart. That's what I used to call it, anyway.
Yeah. P E R C or P E R T?
P E R T. Program Evaluation and Review Technique that says what, what the, first of all, what the objective is, and then secondly, who's in charge, what the individual assignments are, who's gonna do it, and, and by what time it's gonna be finished. Gary's absolutely right. We can't sit around, and we're playing blind man's buff with this, all this stuff. We don't, nobody knows, at least I don't, I've been all, heard all this stuff. I don't know what's next and who's gonna do it. And I thank you for your comments, and I'd like to wrap this up with that. And I'd also like if the board would permit me to order this report put in full into our minutes.
Sure.
Is that okay? Because it didn't make the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, one, one, one item that our ponds group, and I believe alluding to what Rod is talking about and what Bob and his people are doing over at Pelican Reserve are doing, we need clarification on one item that I brought up earlier and made a recommendation. We need to have a rescension of that March resolution of a hundred percent letorals. If we're not gonna do that, and you're not gonna take that, then we are going to be writing a model that I'm telling you is headed for disaster.
We're, we have tried to do that previously. We're gonna need some more background, some more leverage.
Would you want me to arrange a meeting where I bring in Lee County officials one after another and tell you?
No. What we had was, is we had the gentleman from Florida Gulf Coast University who is diametrically opposed to what you said.
Gary, it will not fly in this community, I'm telling you.
Let it, so let it, let it go for tonight, Ed.
Okay.
Thank, thank you all for your help.
Do you have a question?
Thank you.
Well, it just seems to keep on coming up. And if Ed can come back with some additional information or someone from the county who would be willing to give us some more information, I would be willing to listen.
If you're willing to reconsider.
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Want me to go that route?
Yes, but we don't have to do it immediately.
Okay, what?
We've got a lot of...
Your next meeting?
Let's say two meetings, at least two meetings down the road. Because I wanna get, I wanna get ahead and make some real headway on this thing along the lines of what Gary had just said.
May I ask a question?
You may.
Well, no. Well, yeah, in general, but if we're gonna bring it back, that would be the second meeting in October. Do we wanna just bring all of this? Because I was, I was gonna bring Jeff Keyes at the next meeting. I think we just do it all at, at one meeting together.
You need to get Jeff out of the way.
I'd rather see Jeff at the next meeting, because I think that, there's gonna be a long discussion with the information he provides to us. And if we try and do all of it in one meeting, I think we'll be here till ten o'clock.
I think that's very wise. Anybody that's, well, Jeff is a natural mention.
I would also urge maybe Scott, the board members, get those two reports to look at before then. We, our group, like you guys had it, that's, I apologize for that. We've had them and looked at them, and it's just the stuff you want. Pelican Reserve has been doing this long before and way ahead of us on that, and it's working great. It's working great.
You're assuming that I'm smart enough to read those reports and know what they say. I probably am gonna have to have...
I know, I know you are.
Oh, I'm gonna have to have somebody help me on this.
Are we still gonna do 4F in the book?
Thank, thank you very much.
What's your question?
I got a couple of questions on some of the reports.
Well, we're, we, we're gonna, we're gonna go right now to committee reports unless you think it's a, a natural, a natural move. What's your pleasure?
I'd say it's, we're here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
4F and the consent agenda, Mr. Newbauer wants to have some discussion on that.
If it may be appropriate, to pull 4F off the consent agenda for discussion.
That's what he said.
I thought so, I wasn't sure. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Tony clarified what my misspeak. Who created this, this report, by the way? Molly? What is in our book is 4F, Site Inspection, Stormwater Pond Management. Maybe she hasn't seen it?
That would be myself.
That would be me, myself, and I?
And Ella.
Me, myself, and Ella. Okay.
You, you want Molly to come to the podium and answer some questions?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Molly, would you please come to the podium and help us through the report?
All right.
All right. If you would, please, I'm gonna start with your report right on what we're showing as page thirty-eight in the agenda book, but you'd be showing it as your first page.
All right.
Okay? Under Stormwater Management, it says, summary, water levels are seasonally high, yada, yada, yada. Then we get into the fourth sentence. Daniel Preserve Water Clarity is murky or heavily tinted, most likely due to the red mulch.
Yes.
Really?
Yes. Whenever you use pine straw or mulch, sometimes they're dyed. That dye will end up in your stormwater ponds.
So the dye is actually a water soluble dye?
No, it's a dye. I don't know if it's water soluble. I'd have to go back and check.
Well, I would think it'd have to be if it would be capable of being dispersed by water.
And it is, not only that, you have high tannins, so if there's any leaf debris, but in this case, in Daniel's Preserve, you have a lot of mulch in the area.
So you figure that.
That's where...
Now, is the mulch properly installed?
I would say yes, but then there's a lot of it. And then when people start talking about the ordinances and wanting to cut back on letorals and things like that, that's where you start having some of these different conversations. Because even the backside of your ponds, where we say no fertilization zone, I would prefer there would not be a fertilization zone in the front of your house, too. Because what happens is the, these mulches go down on your beds, and that water gets hit by rainwater, gutter, sprinklers, whatever, and that water, those mulches, the dyes, will come off of it and go into your storm drain and straight into your ponds. However, some of the lakes, they also put some of the mulch really close by or end up throwing it into your lakes.
Speaking of that, underneath Additional Pond Details Follow B, Grass Clippings, we've had a number of repetitive reports that talk about not just Silver Lakes, but Silver Lakes has been mentioned before.
Yes.
The golf course has been mentioned before.
Yes.
And this just keeps happening and happening and happening, and I'm wondering, do you know, how have we communicated to the communities and/or the specific people involved to say, "Please stop this"?
Right. I'll have to go back to each place and see. So it's either gonna be a letter, or it hasn't been communicated back yet.
So...
So the golf course is more of a, we talk and work with them, Elle does. Elle would take this information and go back either to the neighbors, or to the landscapers, or to the golf course.
But how do we know that that's been done? It keeps getting mentioned, it keeps happening.
I can incorporate something to have a...
Policy?
Policy, and also in the task area, to put in the task and have it, a directive to contact the neighborhood by letter, if you want it by letter. Sometimes it's verbal.
Okay.
Sometimes it's stopping right there with the landscapers and talking to them while we're there.
So here I come in with a management model. Who's responsible for that?
All right.
Who do we hold accountable for that?
All right. For clippings?
Because if people aren't held accountable, it doesn't get done.
Okay. For clippings, I'll, I'll talk to Elle and I'll make that gateway staff.
Okay. And then if you go down on, later on, under Lake Eighty-Nine Gateway, item three, it talks about floating spike rush which appeared to be cut or pulled.
Right.
So...
If we can find out who's doing it, it's...
Well, I mean, if it's behind this house, not rocket science, who was the one that did it? Who's responsible to go to the...
We will make that gateway staff.
Okay.
And we will do that with a letter.
Okay.
Okay.
And then under item number six, Lake Seventy-Eight, Daniel's Preserve, it talks about overusing fertilizer, and we've heard this before.
Yes.
Not only at this location, but at a number of locations. Who's responsible to go communicate that?
Gateway staff. And that would be things that we have...
So we've established a policy.
We have, have that where they do go back to the, either the landscaper...
Okay.
Or HOA.
Then the last part of the management model becomes, and where does the record of that being, that task being completed? Where do you have a record of that? So that somebody who then checks the record makes sure that it's actually done.
Okay, that would go on the follow-up task on your last page, page forty-one.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, 'cause even later on, under item nine, it talks about a letter will be sent to the resident, but you wouldn't know if it was, because there's really nothing that's in place that you can check that. Is that correct?
Right, or I do get emails CC'd to me when the letters do go out, but I don't have a running list.
But you have no recollection of that.
Right. In our other CDDs, we do have a running list, and I can start a running list.
Okay, so we've just created a management model. I'm done.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Molly.
All right.
Bill, one thing you might recommend is that when Elle, being the president of one of these HOAs, and the biggest one, when they're out running around looking at the lakes, I would suggest maybe watching for landscapers when they're in a community. I mean, we got a plethora of landscapers. But just pick one out that's especially doing mowing clippings along the lake. And go up there and just observe what's going on and what they're doing. I think you're gonna get the word of mouth go along a lot quicker than anything if you come down on the ones that are guilty and doing something wrong. Going to the residents, it's gonna go right like that, just like that. Going to the HOAs, it's gonna go like that. Go directly to the people doing the work in this community. And that includes our own contractor, our own vendor.
I remember about a year and a half ago, we had a couple of folk here from Silver Lakes who were very vocal about the condition of their lakes, and we scrambled, maybe it's two years now, time flies. But that obvious master association can be the communicator. If they're gonna complain about the condition of their lakes, and they even complained about the condition behind the clubhouse, that would be, we need to do something. And my, call me crazy, I think that those kind of things are things that are great thoughts and great intention, but they never get done.
Well, your best management practices are being handled by the guy that's cutting the grass right now.
Okay.
And they're the ones we need to address.
But we need to make that fabulous lady there, if she takes on the responsibility or she dumps it in Elle's hands, or whomever, somebody's got to take that responsibility.
I'm just trying to say, get, get quickly to the source, because I think that'll solve the problem. The other one, as I noticed you meant, made reference to Lake Eighty, Pond Eighty-Nine. Pond Eighty-Nine has a DO that calls for zero letorals.
We're not gonna talk about letorals tonight.
I understand that, but I think that, I think that, I think that, I think that may, if you could add one and one and get two, that's why they are disappearing.
So you've been putting out the word, Ed?
I'm just telling the facts.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, item three A, it's roadway landscape advisory committee report, which is in your agenda, and there are discussed proposals for my staff for the median work, and I believe it was in SIGHT. Well, why don't you help me there?
Be happy to help you. Scott Connolly. Yes, we had a special meeting last week with the landscape advisory committee. We did take proposals from, I believe it was four, maybe five firms, and it was shortlisted here to in SIGHT, and they were the selected firm. We've engaged with them. We met with them earlier this week and have them under contract. And actually, next Tuesday, at the landscape committee meeting, they're bringing a conceptual plan for the planting of the medians. So they're on fast track, hopefully to get this done within thirty days. So then we'll have the plans done, and then we'll go out and get some prices and, and get some plantings in there.
Okay, and you remember, of course, that we've got eleven light poles that've gotta come out of there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, don't do what we were glad we didn't do before and repave, riff and drive and then have to tear it up.
Understood.
Thank you very much.
Scott, for clarification, well, once these landscape plans come, are finalized, they'll come back to the board for review and approval, so the board sees what...
Yes, we'll bring them back to the board and, and then we'll be putting them out to bid. And there's also, they're gonna run it by Lee County DOT as a courtesy and get their opinion next week after it meets with the landscape committee.
Okay. Yes, please.
I was just a little bit concerned about the fact that the board didn't see any of these proposals, that the landscape committee made the decision on who was going to be chosen and why, and it's kinda like the bathymetrics. The, the landscape committee is supposed to be assisting the board in making decisions, but it seems as though they've just made, they're just making decisions and we are cut out of the loop.
Well, you can blame me partly for that. The, the board, excuse me, the landscape committee made a recommendation, the management...
Uh, the management, uh, con- confirmed it. It was for, I'll think of like six thousand dollars, and I told them to go ahead with it.
And this is just for the medians at the north end of Gateway Boulevard?
This is just, this is just the initial design for the medians at the north end of Gateway Boulevard. I hope you aren't unhappy with me, 'cause I didn't hold it up for another week and a half.
I, I'll trust your judgment on this as long as I know that someone on the board saw this and agreed that their decision was correct, because I don't want, there seems to be some unhappiness with some of the things that are going on with the landscape committee and that they are, they're almost perceiving themselves to be autonomous. And I think we need to be real careful with that.
We, we do, and we need to be real careful with them because they are all volunteers-
I understand.
And they're professionals, and we, and we have to, to treat them as such.
Yes, sir.
I wanna support what you're saying, Margaret. When it comes to aesthetics, things that the residents are seeing every day, I think it's really important that the board are involved in the decision.
Yes.
I, I agree with you. The problem we've got is we have a standing committee here whose, whose mission is to, is to collect, not just collect facts, but to make recommendations. That's why they're under the sunshine law. And to make recommendations to us, uh, it's a question of, is it every inch of the way? Or is it for a master plan?
Why?
Now, when it comes, if, if we're talking about two or three medians, from my standpoint, let them, let's, let's see how they perform. But there is this perceived autonomy, then I agree with that. And when it comes to the next big thing, which is a master plan which will follow this one, I absolutely think the board should be involved in, in all of the detail.
And that was my concern, was that I wasn't sure if this would set a precedent.
I'm with you on it.
I'm with you on it.
Thank you.
May we proceed to consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we have, uh, several items in the consent agenda, items A through G. Are there items that we are gonna pull for discussion before we vote on the consent agenda? You have-
Two.
Would you give me the letters, please?
B for Brian, G for George.
B for Brian, G for George. Any others? Uh, Pam, Margaret?
Uh, C.
C is in cat?
No, no, I'm sorry, D is in dog.
D is in dog.
Mr. Chairman, I do have item C to hand out to the board. I didn't do it because last time I previously tried to hand them out, you wanted me to wait till the item was given.
That's, that, that is, uh, so?
But I did send them by email to you earlier this week.
Thank you.
Yeah, good.
And this will be the new protocol for the ongoing report monthly.
By email?
By email, the week of the meeting, per-
Thank you.
Per the district manager's request.
This was, uh, this was, uh, this was our desire to, to have, uh, this report in a much more timely fashion.
It's still once a month, and the completed items will be inspected at the next following month. But we've added an additional column on the follow-up list that shows additional work that might have been done but wasn't inspected yet. For instance, if they've completed an item that we inspected and did not be completed, they may have marked it as completed, but we have not yet inspected it and visually shown you that it's completed, and we will do that in the following report. And then after that, it will follow off, it'll fall off of the report and no longer appear on the tracking sheet.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It does. Rod, your item B is in Bravo, I believe?
Thank you. Um, okay, page sixteen of the agenda. Uh, Scott, I just wanna ask you a couple, question about page sixteen, please. Uh, it's the meter replacement program, which is listed as item seven and number nine on that sheet. You with me?
I am.
Yeah, it's jumbled. It just seems a bit jumbled to me. I can't make it a tail, head or tail, looking at the numbers and reading the text of what's, what's been approved by the, it says that forty-one thousand dollars has been approved by the board in both those boxes. That doesn't, that's not correct, right?
Uh, I believe that was for the pilot project.
Yeah.
That was item seven.
Yeah.
That's what we first reported.
But then number nine?
And then number nine is where the board had, we finalized the pilot project and then continued with the-
The rollout.
Community, the rollout, yes.
I'm just asking if, there's clearly something wrong with the numbers. I'm just asking if you would, if you think it'd be a good idea to make number seven the pilot and number nine the rollout, and we can see what's, where we've gone from the pilot to the rollout in terms of, how, what the board has approved in terms of the figures. Uh, because there's some repetitive text at the end of both seven and nine as well. So it just seems a bit jumbled up. It perhaps needs a bit of attention.
Uh, Yvonne and I'll work on that.
Thank you. Page eighteen.
Can we have a bigger font?
Yeah.
Those of us visually challenged, could we have a bigger font?
I'm really struggling with making this le- more legible. Um, this is the form that was provided and to continue to train to work with, and it continues to grow. It's living and breathing.
Yeah.
We'll continue to search-
But if it continues to grow, it's going to be non-legible. I mean, we won't be able to read it.
Well, you know, again, going vertical versus horizontal landscape, it makes it more difficult.
If it helps you, if it helps you, Gary, in Adobe, um, you roll your mouse onto the bottom menu bar and it gives you a plus minus, and you can zoom in, just if, anyway. So, page number eighteen.
Just make it size twelve font, thanks.
Page eighteen.
Yes.
I mentioned this to me, a meeting ago, um, would you, there's clearly something wrong with the second column. You've gotta know all the way down there. These can't be, these can't be contracted amounts if the board haven't approved them. You've got contracted amounts in the fourth column, and you're saying the board hasn't approved any of them?
These are pending projects, um, and they have not been approved by the board. And I probably, those are budget amounts, not contract amounts.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, just, well, that puzzled me.
Uh, we, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, page twenty-five.
Five? We're under, okay.
Um, looking at those four spends on the first, one, lakes one oh four, six, seven, and eight. See if my screen's going in and out. Hold on, please. I've got it. I've got it now, Bill, thank you. Yeah, if you can look, please, at twenty-five, and then, and then roll you, roll down to page seventeen, because there's a repeated set of numbers. Look at item nineteen on page seventeen.
Okay, I don't have that printout.
Oh, you don't, okay.
What's the topic?
Uh, the topic is gateway road rehabilitation.
Okay.
Uh, um, excuse me, point, item nineteen on page seventeen is entitled lake bank restoration. And it, it duplicates one, it talks about lakes one oh four, six, seven, and eight. And the numbers in the, in the fourth column on page seventeen don't replicate what we're seeing on page twenty-five in terms of the, the amount spent. And it, and it's, that's confusing. I'm not really sure why that is.
Oh, back to the project task.
Yeah, I'm asking you to compare page seventeen with page twenty-five, and the numbers don't tie up for what we spent on those four lakes.
Wow.
It seems, uh, confusing, so would you take a look at that, please?
I, I will. The, the, okay.
I do, Mike.
I will. It's, it is complicated, it's, aren't meant to be financial sheets, but that's what we are trying to utilize them for.
Yeah.
And, and we'll, we'll do better.
Well, I do like-
We'll try to make, achieve that goal.
I like, I like the layout, and I like what's coming in these meeting books now in terms of at a glance, at a glance, dates and contracts and figures. We've just gotta make sure they're correct. But I think the method is great.
Okay.
Although, the printing could be a little more clearer, I should say. It looks like it's been copied and copied and copied.
We need a magnifying sheet.
No, if you, Margaret, if you bring it up to a hundred and fifty, it's still garbled.
It's still-
Take a look at it.
Yeah.
Uh, page twenty-six, Scott. Can you go to that, please?
Okay.
On the meeting book. Okay, um, looking at the aquogenics figures there, we've got a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for lake maintenance. And, um, I've looked at the aquogenics contract, and we're gonna deal with this in I, in, on item six in the agenda. I've looked at the contract, and there's no figure in that contract. And I just wondered, is this the annual amount or is the annual contracted amount with aquogenics? 'Cause I know we're spending more than what the contract's, uh, calls for.
This is an annual amount, I believe.
Is it what we're actually spending or is it what the contract says? 'Cause the contract doesn't say anything in terms of this, it was signed by you, Gary, actually, and there's no number in there. And I don't, I'm-
Well, there's an exhibit.
Well, I can't imagine-
On the pen.
I can't imagine that got past you. So anyway, um, I just wanna know what that number really means, that one forty-seven, please. Is that the, what we're spending in terms of all the items?
I, I think the one forty-seven is the bit, scheduled bid items, but it's tallied up, which is part of the contract on the aquogenics contract.
Okay.
Uh, for all areas, it's one forty-seven, six fifty-three, first year amount, second year amount, third year amount.
And the annual amount.
You forwarded me the contract, but I didn't see all that schedule of numbers, that's all.
Okay, well, I-
Thank you.
Apologize for that.
That's all right. Page twenty-seven.
There you go.
Thanks, Tony.
Yes, sir.
Page twenty-seven on the agenda. Um, I'm looking at the cell phone contract with Verizon, and that's, that came up for renewal at the end of September, it looks like. Left second one down.
Mm-hmm.
Did you renew that contract?
It's, it's monthly, under the terms.
Okay, but the expiry date's the end of September?
Um, we, you know, every time we, you know, when you go to get a new cell phone and you add to the contract and you modify it, then they set you up for another period of time, and-
Okay.
I will verify that date.
My question is, how many cell phones are we getting for four thousand three hundred bucks? How many cell phones are serviced, roughly?
Um, each staff member has a phone, and we have, uh, uh, another utility emergency phone. Plus, we have three backups when they fall out of their pockets, fall in the water, and-
So every member of staff has a cell phone?
Well, not every member of the staff, but all of our field staff.
Okay.
Uh, Melissa, Yvonne, myself.
So we're talking about like ten phones?
Approximately.
Something, so that's- So that's, uh, four hundred and thirty-two dollars each per year.
That's much.
Not much.
That's the annual-
That's the annual amount.
Four thousand thirty-two dollars per phone per year? If it's ten phones.
We can-
I'm just asking if that's, you think that's a reasonable figure? I'm in the cell phone game and it just seems a bit high to me.
It's, what, it's around thirteen phones, right? Thirteen or fourteen phones. It's ten, ten employees.
Well, not, not everybody's full-time, kind of.
Okay. And so that's around four hundred, forty-five-
Probably ten, ten phones.
Yeah, four hundred a year.
So four thousand, a little, about five thousand, that's, that's what a phone costs. That's what a phone costs, a hundred dollars a month.
Okay, I, I'm just asking if we're shocked around or are we just, are we just gonna roll it?
We did, we did, Diane did a lot of research about two years ago when it first came on board. We upped the program.
A hundred dollars per phone, he's talking a hundred dollars per phone.
There's ten, I think we have ten phones.
No, we have ten phones for, that's four hundred, isn't it?
Four thousand per phone?
Four thou-
Cam?
No.
Four thousand a phone?
No.
No, no, no.
No, he said all the phones. It's four hundred and thirty-two dollars a phone, right?
Per year?
Per year.
And that's thirty-six bucks a month per phone.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good-
Great.
That's a very good deal for a-
Yeah.
Um, then the next point, I don't wanna belabor this, uh, waste management. Um, we're, we're paying seven thousand dollars, and that expired at the end of September. There's six and, what are we getting for six hundred bucks a month, which is pretty well where we are?
We have a dumpster at the, uh, commons pool, we have a dumpster at the soccer park, and we have the dumpster here. Plus, we have recycle at the three locations, and it's commercial rates.
Are they the only act in town?
Uh, pretty much.
Yeah.
So they have a monopoly?
Yeah. Garbage is-
It amounts to the same thing.
Careful, some, someone may come visit you.
Somebody did that, didn't they? Thank you, uh, Scott, um, and that's all I wanted to ask, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Look forward to the union label.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Margaret, was it you that had, what was, which was the date?
Yeah, and I'll be brief. I just wanna ask a, a quick question on, um, the fish harvesting plan. Are they do, still doing fish harvesting in the lakes?
I will defer to Ms. Molly.
The fish harvesting was occurred so far, is we had an intern come in that was at the cost for Severn Trent and not for Gateway. And what he did was come in to look at the different populations within your system. He did, uh, take the reports, and that's a reason, right, some of the reporting that you're seeing and you question the field reports, they become useful tools. We can actually take now your's worth of reports and go through all the different ponds and see where we're having issues and what types of issues. So similar to working with Magnolia Lakes, we could go in there with X amount of reports, look at all the different things, and go to the HOA and work with them and say, over X amount of timeframe, we have seen these types of issues in your ponds, and they can take that back to the residents.
Have you thought of having columns of specifics so that you can have a numerical type of display and you can actually see a deviation? Or even graphing and looking for deviations?
Uh, not at this time, but what we did was take the, we had the intern take the information regarding all the pond times we've seen different types of fish in the ponds.
Right.
And he came up with some graphs and things for us. You do have a heavy load of plecos, for instance, Stony Brook. Uh, we had a person coming out to cast for fish, and one casting, he got about forty to sixty plecos in one casting. That's really a-
Multiple hooks, is that it?
No, he takes the cast, a scene, a cast net. He comes in, it's actually a good deal for him. He fishes for tilapia, and he can take those out to the open market. That's why he comes in for free. And he can take that product, so you do have a high population of tilapia. So he can take those and sell them, but in the same token timeframe, he will go ahead and any exotics, he'll remove those too for you. But just for instance, one casting pulled up one grouping of forty to sixty plecos in that one casting. So you do have a high population of plecos throughout your system. And the intern went through and actually tried to, to find methods. Nobody has any method to come in and get these things out. So he was looking at different ways to go in and try to fish the pleco out. Because the, the guy casting his net, he doesn't like to get those in his net because when you get them in your net, they tear your nets up. And guys that make fish like this, usually, they actually build their own nets, they actually make their own nets. So he has to break every fin off that pleco to get it out of the, the cast net. So there's a lot of different things, but, uh, the intern did also look at, uh, he made some different types of fish traps. He was just trying to figure out different ways to go in and fish these out. Elle and I have taken the information, we're going further into finding different people that will come and look and take things out of the pond, the cost and things like that. So we're setting up different plans to bring forth to the board. So it's still on our report because we're still investigating, doing some things. But the intern also found out the fish and wildlife, he's talked to them. We looked at people that would wanna come and harvest the eggs. There's a lot of things going on with plecos themselves. The other thing is, we wanna, all, and all this information, we wanna tie it together for y'all as a whole plan. We don't wanna piecemeal it, and some of it is, instead of just taking all the fish out, we have to take the fish out and start incorporating native fish into the system. And you have to do it in a balanced way so you can start putting pressure on your non-native fish. So as you're fishing non-native out, you wanna put native fish in.
So are the, is the fish harvesting still going on or has that ended?
That, it's ended for the most part for him to come in and actually take any, uh, fish out. But now the harvester would like to still set up a, um, a, um, how to say? A effort with the, the board so that they can still come in and fish and harvest over periods of time. It won't be a set schedule, but we can work with him to have him come back- It won't be set scheduled, but we can work with him to have him come back in.
Yeah.
Do, and that's the thing, if we can bring a whole plan to y'all, it would make more sense. And then also, we could get something set up with this person. There's other fish harvesters. It's just that usually they become territorial because they want to fish a certain type of pond. They want to make sure the fish are here when they're coming. And so if they have other guys they're competing with, they'd rather do the work themselves.
And that was really what I wanted to know, was if it had ended at this time?
Uh, if, he's still wanting to come back.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and then the other thing is, we need to devise a plan for y'all so we don't have to have this on the, uh, reports or anything so that you'll know that it's just an ongoing effort. It becomes part of your processes and procedures instead of something that you have to look at all the time. But right now, we need to set up a plan so that y'all can understand what we want to fish out, put fish in, and then have a harvester come in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Speaking of snails.
Yes.
Why can't we get rid of these apple snails?
They're going to probably be harder to get rid of than your, uh, fish populations. Uh, there's no, the fish themselves and the snails, there's no known ways to get rid of them except to hand remove. Now, there are some chemicals you can use that I've been told you can use, but you don't want to start putting a lot of chemicals in your lake just to kill the snails. Most likely, it's going to be hand harvesting and it's going to have to probably be some kind of effort where we get volunteers. And it's only going to be a reduction of your snail population. But if you were to go across the street right here at this little church, the, the concrete wall for one of your stormwater pipes is just loaded with them. And I've already gone over there once myself to kill them. You have to do it a certain way. You want to do it a certain way. Not, you're actually, um, creating an issue where you're actually, uh, making the population larger. Because if you scrape them, you're actually, and they get into the water, you're actually releasing them.
They have like spores or?
Want to crush them. No, they're, they're eggs. They're not spores.
Okay.
They release like thousands of clutches of eggs at one time.
Right.
They're really tiny little.
So if we offer the Baptist church. Hold on. They are always do, they are always trying to do food and canned food drives. So, who went, oh? So if we offer them, how many cans of?
Can we, can we go ahead? All right.
See, you're trying to be creative.
We're finished, Molly. Thank you very much. Uh, the next item is the review of the financial statements.
I'm sorry, we didn't, we need to do the consent agenda, but I had, I'll be real quick on this one. And Rod had brought up things that are expiring in September thirtieth. And page twenty-four, the short-term and long-term disability and vehicle and workers' comp. Those say that they expired September thirtieth. Kind of goes along with that.
Right, we are currently working with, uh, Florida Cities on updating that, um, all of our assets. And, uh, I spoke with Paula over at, uh, what was your office?
Coral Springs.
Coral Springs office and Paula Davis. And, uh, we are wrapping that up. Um, I did, uh, review our property and, uh, going back, I sent it all back to the reviewer and I'm waiting on a revised quote on that. And, uh, so it's in process.
Okay.
Trying to be finalized.
Just saw that it was, you know, a couple of weeks away from.
Exactly. Yep. Yep.
Are there any training programs that we can give staff that will reduce the fee? And are there any wind mitigation inspections that we could do that would reduce our property taxes?
Not that I'm aware of. Not, not.
May you ask, maybe?
I, I, I will.
Okay.
On that note, I'll motion to, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right.
Mr. Senior wants to talk about the financial statement.
Uh, Stephen, can I?
Sorry, forgot.
Could we have a chat for a few minutes, please? We haven't talked for a while. I thought I'd use this occasion.
Uh, Stephen Blum, Severn Trent.
Um, page fifty. Page fifty of the agenda. Um, looking at the landscape services, there is a capital outlay at the bottom there of twenty-two thousand eight. Okay, now that's for irrigation and it actually, it's a thirty percent figure of the other seventy percent is on page seventy-three. Which is refurbishing of irrigation zones, part of our capital project. If you look at page seventy-three, that's a figure of fifty-three thousand two hundred. So in total for irrigation, we've got the fifty-three thousand two hundred in the capital. And we've got twenty-two thousand eight hundred in landscape services, seventy-thirty split. Why, my question is, why can't we put it all in the enterprise fund where we, because we're strapped for capital in the general fund?
It, it would depend upon the nature of the project, I would say, depending upon exactly what they're doing with that as to why we split it. Meaning, once, once you get the final project, we can make that determination. If there is nothing that would be benefiting the general fund, then absolutely.
See if we can un-split it. That would be my recommendation because we're, because we're, we're swimming in cash on the enterprise fund.
Well, I, I think at the end of the day, this, this project's not going to make it to this year. So it's going to have to come back to you and at that point, we can have those discussions again.
Thank you. That's that one. Um, um, just a presentational thing on page fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
Yes. Stephen, if you, um, if you compare page fifty-two with page sixty-four, is the repeating total revenue line that I'm talking about that you've done on page sixty-four?
Sure.
And I really think that's helpful putting, because we, otherwise you've got to roll your mouse all the way back to the original revenue figure.
That's fine.
If you can put the revenue line on page fifty-two, that would be great.
Okay, well, I know.
And, and this is why it's really important, at least for me, because if you look at page fifty-two, the figure that stands out to me is the, is the hundred ninety-seven thousand negative. Which is where we, where we are year-to-date. And that's going to have a direct impact on our fixed asset reserves that we're struggling with.
Well, yeah, and let me, you know, clarify that number. Now, moving forward in your new budget, you're going to have your capital projects split.
Okay.
So this right here makes it a little bit tougher for you to see.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, but yeah, so you're, you're really not negative in operations.
Okay.
Because you got your capital projects sitting in there.
Thank you. Page sixty-four, Stephen. Um, third, third line item, meters and supplies. We've got fifty-five thousand dollars there in actual year-to-date. Are these different from the meters that are going on an automatic pro, on an automatic meter project?
Yes, these would be new, new construction that was not a part of that, uh, original project in terms of replacing meters.
Okay.
So you got the two.
But it's the same meter?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's the same meter and it's all going to be functioning together. But again, you've got one project with a certain dollar amount that was for a certain number of meters.
Okay.
Now, this is for new construction.
New construction, like Hampton Park for it?
Yes.
Got it? Okay, thank you. That's fine. Uh, finally, page sixty-three. Um, fourth line item from the bottom. Um, we've got twenty-nine thousand dollars, um, excuse me, manhole maintenance repairs. We've got twenty-nine thousand dollars budgeted year-to-date and we haven't spent anything. Why is that?
Well, if, if I remember, the short answer was, when we did the budget, at that time, they were uncertain what the repairs would look like for the manholes. And when they went to do them, they realized it was not nearly as bad as what they were anticipating.
But the report we heard from Tetra Tech said that they were back.
There is one manhole and then we contracted already a company to develop it, Texas, eight thousand dollars.
Are we going to spend this twenty-nine thousand?
Only eight thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, um, Stephen, I just want, just one second. Stephen, uh, you and I had a conversation earlier. Uh, and I want to describe it for the board, uh, or I'll let you if I can't do it properly. But in the enterprise fund, as we were just, uh, talking about, we're on a meter replacement program that is eighty to eighty-five percent complete. And when I looked at the, uh, description, the notes that you had put in and tried to, uh, adjust my thinking to how much Iberia Bank still has of ours, we came to the conclusion that on page seventy-one, there was no dollar amount showing for Iberia Bank, that is, the difference between the one million, one twenty loan and, and what we spent.
Right.
Uh, is it possible to have a footnote at the bottom of page seventy-one that would indicate the, the balance that Iberia Bank still has as an obligation for us, uh, for, for the enterprise fund that has not yet been spent?
Um, is it possible if I put it on page seventy-six instead?
Seventy-six, seventy-one?
Because seventy-six, and just to kind of follow up on this point real quickly, uh, similar to what you would get with a state revolving, uh, fund, you, as you pull down, they pay your bills. It's not like they would give you five million dollars upfront. So this loan is very similar. So there is no bank account that's tied to it. And what we can do on page seventy-six where we recap the project is, is we can put, you know, initial project total or committed contract, how much you've spent to date, and then the, the difference would be what's remaining.
Is that, did they give you any indigestion?
Not at all.
May I?
Please.
Um, we talked about this two weeks or four weeks ago about the extra cash that we now find ourselves swimming in due to, on the enterprise fund due to the Lee County deal. And you were going to look into how we can put some of that into the capital and revise the capital for the enterprise fund, the, uh, the reserve.
Right.
The reserve. Uh, is that something you're still working on?
Oh, yeah. We have been working on it actually as I was listening to some other stuff. What you're going to be getting is, you're going to be getting a fixed asset reserve schedule that's going to show for each of your funds, where you started the year, where you spent, what else is committed, and then what's remaining.
Great.
And then you're going to need to decide based on that, what projects you want to continue. In terms of, for example, the stormwater project with six hundred thousand, you're only probably going to spend about a hundred thousand. You know, you're going to ma, make sure you don't spend that for something else. So we've got some additional schedules that we've already put together that you'll be getting.
So we're talking another two weeks, four weeks? What do you think?
Um, you're going to get the, you'll see the first version in, in two weeks. Because what I'm trying, what we're doing right now is making sure we've got all of the contracts, similar to what you guys were talking about earlier. Making sure that I've got everything tied dollar for dollar with, with Scott's numbers.
Didn't we decide that we were going to, uh, have, have a discussion on that in November?
Yes, but I wanted to give you guys the first version. Because that, so people can kick it around and, and see, make sure that there's nothing, you know, and then they were going to have the official discussion in November, at which point we were going to request the board to make some, some motions to move some of this money to the actual reserves.
So it'll be more of a presentation than a query? Can we do that?
It could be both.
A presentation.
Sure. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Are we ready for the motion on the consent agenda? Please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items four A through four G.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion of a second. If there's no further conversation, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Five, zero. Board's going to stand and recess for ten minutes.